I'd like to call the city council meeting for January 23rd here at the Wiggins Auditorium to order. This meeting is being televised live on cable channel nine and is being taped by PBD Access Television and is also being recorded by our city stenographer. If you please rise for a moment of silence. Now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have approval of the record, Mr. President.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. At this time, I would like to call up Bob LaVassiere. He couldn't make our last meeting and he'll give us an update on snow removal. Mr. LaVassiere.
Good evening. Bob LaVassiere, Director of Public Services. I was asked to come tonight to discuss sidewalk plowing, I believe. I know in our first two storms of the year, we had some long-duration storms, you know, not a lot of snow, but we didn't do a very good job getting out on the sidewalks. We had some issues with our equipment. With the heavy snow, we had some of our snowblowers attachments on. We probably would have done a better job of putting some of other attachments on, but anyways, that caused us a few breakdowns. And due to the long length of the storm, we had a hard time getting some of our employees to finish out the storm. And not to their fault, I mean, they were long storms. Some of these guys were out there for 48 hours with sanding and whatnot. So from that, we went back and readdressed our snowplow operations when it comes to our equipment and how we handle that. So the mayor had asked me to take a look at our equipment. I had some of our employees who run the equipment go out and take a look at some different machines, see what aspects our machines are falling short. One of the issues with the machines that we have, they're over 20 years old. They articulate where they move, they turn from the center, which gives us a hard time getting up and maneuvering around some of these sidewalks through sidewalks would have utility poles and signs. So they requested to see if we could take a look at a single unit without articulation and a smaller unit. So we've gone out and we've looked at some Tarek machines, which are skid steers, track machines. We found that the town of North Andover uses them. So we sent a couple of guys up there. They tested them out in North Andover. They were gracious enough to let us run the machines around for a little bit and our employees are very impressed by that. So we're going to be requesting to see if we could buy two of those units. This past storm, I thought they did a great job getting out early. Right at the end of the storm, they got out right onto the roads. It took them about nine hours to finish. We had the two machines. One went west, one went downtown. I mean, nine hours after being out for 12 hours during the night, that makes for a long day. So with the addition of two new pieces of equipment, that would cut our time in half. So be very appreciated by the staff, you know, to shorten that time limit down. And doing so also, we're looking at our staffing to see if we can get more employees throughout the city to come in and maybe manpower some of the equipment as well. So we're doing a bigger overview of the whole operation. But if I can answer any of your questions, if you have any questions on how we operate.
I'll open it up to the council.
Thank you, Council President. Bob, I know that several weeks ago, when I made an announcement of the phone number to dispatch where people would have issues to utilize that. And I did have a couple residents call me back and said they utilized it, they called it in. And shortly after calling it in, the area that they had a concern with was addressed. So I'm happy to see that that is actually working and people seeing it that it's working. And hopefully, people will utilize that often, too. Sometimes it takes, it's a delay when they may call us and for us to call you, that they actually see there's a immediate response after they called that number that we gave out again for the dispatch. So I just want to let people know that is up and going and I know we talked about it and you're aware of it. So it's good. Thank you.
We still get a lot of, not that we get a lot of them, but a lot of them come in through email. So they're utilizing the email seems like a lot more than they do phone calls. So we try to address them as quick as we can.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say kudos. Thank you, Bob. Guys are doing it. The crew is doing a great job. Thank you.
I will pass that along to them. I thought they did a great job this past weekend.
Counsel him again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. LaVassiere. If you could just kind of back up a second to what you said about what expectations should be in terms of timing on the clearing of the sidewalks, that you had kind of indicated that in this past event it was nine hours, but you could cut that in half. And I just want to understand a little bit better what the expectation should be now and what it would be with the new equipment that you're requesting.
Well, the expectation now is as soon as the storm's over, as soon as we're done cleaning up, we get some of our employees to go into the sidewalk tractors. The reason why we wait until afterwards is because the sidewalks are so close to the curbing that when we go down and clean up and push back, it inevitably goes back onto the sidewalk. So we wait until after. So nine hours, I made sure, I calculated out how long it took them this weekend. So it was nine hours for them. And it was a small, light storm. So we put, instead of having the snowblowers on this weekend, we put on the V-plow and just plowed through it and it went much quicker. So if we had a snowblower on it, it probably would have taken 12 hours to get through, 12, 15 hours to get through everything. With the new sidewalk tractors, we anticipate during a heavy storm to send out one tractor with a V-plow and send one behind it with a snowblower, which would make it a lot quicker for us to manage getting through everything. The snowblower slows everything down, you know, trying to get through the snowbanks and whatnot. It really bogs it down. And the snowblower then takes everything in its path through it. And we find a lot of stuff that goes through that snowblower that damages it. So if we can get through it with the V-plow, everything kind of sloughs back down, but it's a lot less for the snowblower than to take care of it. So if it's nine and a half for a storm like we had over the weekend, you know, we'd get two more pieces of equipment. That'll cut it in half to four hours. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it does sort of. But four hours from what point in time? I mean, from the point in time that you finished the plowing operation?
Finished the plowing operation. So then we'll send out, after we finish the plowing operation, we'll send out the Sanders. You know, we'll go out and coat the city again with salt. So we'll take the non-CDL drivers and put them into the sidewalk machines.
We got this book years ago here, in the winter of 2014, 15, that I look at from time to time, you know, when it's snowing, you have some time on your hands occasionally. And it's, in here, it said that the rule of thumb would be to plow the whole city is about eight hours. Is that still valid or is that, have we improved on that? Or I know, granted, it heavily depended on the intensity of the storm and so forth, but is there a rule of thumb that you work with?
Yeah, it won't take us eight hours to go through a whole, through your route. We don't give out eight-hour routes. So if you start at point A on your route, it doesn't take you eight hours to get, finish that route, no. If we're going to use just city equipment, it would take us eight hours. But with our private contracts enough, they should be able to get through their route when we do cleanup in four hours.
So from the time the event ends, if it's an average event, let's call it, if there is such a thing, four hours to plow the city and then given, if this new equipment were to be approved, potentially another four hours to hit all the sidewalks, that is...
Yeah, more or less.
More or less, yeah. I'm not going to hold you there. But it's hours, it's hours, hours, not days, is what I'm, you know...
Right, right, right. So as soon as the snow stops, we don't just start at point A and go around. It's dependent, you know, where they are in their cleanup process, you know? So if they had just hit a street half an hour before the snow stopped, they may not have to get back there.
Yeah, it's, you know, as you know, shortly after you were hired, this is, some of the sidewalk clearing stuff is a little bit more focused in my ward because there are, obviously sidewalks are important everywhere, but we've, in Ward Two, there are a number of sidewalks that are actually covered by ordinance where they need to, by ordinance, they're supposed to be cleared within four hours after the end of the event. So I've often asked or reminded property owners, business owners that are in those areas of that requirement, but it's hard to do that if we're not doing the same thing.
Right. And we own, the city owns some properties down, you know, whether it's Wallace Street down by the library or the parking lot around Foster and Main that just falls through the cracks for us because we weren't, we were thinking that, you know, those business owners were taking care of it and we forgot that we, in the middle of that, have property. So we've kind of closed the loop on that.
And that's been noticeable. I don't mean to say that that has not been, it has been. So, but I, the reason for my question on what's a reasonable timeframe and everything is I'd like to hold everybody to roughly the same standard, you know?
Oh, right, yeah.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
But we have the luxury of being out the whole storm, you know? So some of these business owners, you know, they have, and I'm not defending them, but they have, you know, homes and whatnot that they got to take care of before they get down to the businesses. But...
No question about it. No question about it. Thank you, Mr. LaVassiere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, yes, the last storm was great. I got, actually got calls from a few residents to say the sidewalks and areas of PBD were much better this time. My question, we briefly spoke earlier today and I guess my question just before the whole council is you had said you'd done, had done a little reorganization of some staffing levels, but are you at full staff with all your employees at DPS as of right now?
We have some openings right now, yeah.
You do? So, I mean, I guess that ties into adding an additional two pieces of sidewalk equipment that need to be staffed. Do we have the staffing that could do it even with the reorg that...
Well, it's a funny thing about new equipment, you know, more people are willing to use newer equipment. So I'm not worried about it.
I was asking if I was going to come down and be able to use it.
And on that, with the new equipment, I believe you said they're skid stairs, correct?
Tracked, tracked skid stairs, yeah.
So is there a hoisting requirement for the hydraulic license?
There is, yeah.
And our guys all have the hydraulics license or those that you'll place in those...
Those that we will put in it will have, yes. And then we'll be sending more this spring out for hydraulic license for the next class.
Thank you. And the other, the only other thing was, and again, you and I had spoke about it, but I wanted to move to receive item 8A under suspension of the rules. And that's the bus stop list throughout the city of PBD and...
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And I know I had mentioned it to you and it was a discussion between Counselor Charest and I believe Counselor Sasso and I. And, you know, we wondered if marking those locations would be helpful to contractors, even to DPS employees that weren't aware of where all the school bus stops were. But upon looking at that list, I see that there's hundreds of locations there and it would be a major undertaking just to mark them. But you had also mentioned that those change from year to year. So we couldn't permanently mark them. But again, just for the council's knowledge, I wanted to let them know that you and I had spoken about it and leave it up to you to discuss it with them.
So if we're, you know, if we get those two pieces of equipment, we're going to dedicate a lot of time to sidewalks, I think that would alleviate a lot of those issues.
Thank you very much. Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to echo Counselor Gould's comment and Counselor Turco's, you know, it's an unenviable task trying to keep the city working with all the properties we have, but also during the storm work. I know that the request for the equipment will come through the finance committee, but whatever we can do to help support getting those sidewalks done with better equipment, I'm fully in support. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much for your time.
Can I just give a quick update on something?
Absolutely.
So I'm not sure if you've noticed, the Jersey barriers on Endicott Street, I just, I haven't spoken to the council regarding this, but we were, on our last bridge inspection on Endicott, it came back with some deficiencies. The Mass DOT sent us a letter asking us to do some cribbing underneath the bridge, which we did, and then asked us to put up the Jersey barriers to keep traffic off that eastbound beam. So we've done that. We've also used some Chapter 90 money. We've gone out, we've got proposals for a new design of that bridge. So that bridge is under design right now. So hopefully, within the next six to nine months, we'll have a design for that and a funding source. We'll come back and let you know what our funding source is to have that bridge replaced. And then the other quick update is about six or eight months ago, I was given a motion to do a signed inventory. We've had that out. The inventory has been completed. Now it's being correlated back into a database. So in the next month or two, we'll come to the council and show you that database. That's it for my updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move on to hearings. First hearing is Foray. The city clerk will read the notice.
Notice is here, but given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as a special permitting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 23, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass. On the application from James Greco, 11 Cory Drive, PBD, Mass, requesting a special permit to amend special permit 27-2012, specifically amending condition number one, changing the hours of operation to 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week, and condition four and five to allow the applicant to prepare pizza and submarine sandwiches on premises at 160 Lynn Street, PBD, Mass, as filed in accordance with sections 1.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Counselor Thomas J. Rosignol, City Council President.
Thank you. I'll now ask the petitioner to come forward and come to the podium. If you could give your name and address for the record, and what you plan to do at that location.
James Greco, I live at 11 Cory Drive in PBD. The establishment's at 160 Lynn Street. We just basically want to add subs and pizza to it. The last permit, they had prepared subs and prepared pizza, and I just want to start making them, pretty much.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anybody here to speak in favor? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition, to speak in opposition of the petitioner? Seeing none, Counsel Walton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to move to receive late communication from Resident Bill Trachea, 47 Bay Street Road.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a chance to read through the late communication. I know the council has just received it today. Just to go over the highlights of what was brought up, for many of you who might be familiar with this location, you'll note that there's no parking enforced on both sides of Lynn Street in that area, and it's directly adjacent to the Brown School entrance. The resident, Mr. Trachea, brought up a few points that I want to address, and also I've had a chance to speak with Mr. Greco and go over each of these items, so I wanted to share my feedback. The first point that was brought up was the no parking on both, both sides of Lynn Street at the location. The second was regarding trash mitigation, and then also delivery truck parking, and where the supplies would go for the storefront as well. So I'll, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but you can have a chance to look through and find out what Mr. Trachea's concerns were. I've also heard from a few residents who've shared similar concerns. The first I'll get to is trash removal. In speaking with Mr. Greco, it's evident that the property does not allow for a dumpster to be put in place. His plan has been to remove all trash from the property on a nightly basis, so that there isn't a presence of trash, and there's not a need for a dumpster. I believe this also helps to mitigate the perception of a rodent issue in that area. I think everybody knows in South PBD, we've had issues with rodents. By not having a trash storage facility set up there in the way of a traditional dumpster, I think his plan to remove the trash on a nightly basis will help to mitigate that challenge. Secondly, the big issue, I think that we're all well aware of there, is the parking issue. A number of years back, as many of you are aware, there was a tragic accident right in that area. There is no parking on both sides, and there is no parking at the Brown School adjacent to the property. Being the case, concern was brought up from a number of neighbors and residents that with the expanded use, there's concern that there's going to be cars that are double parked and that sort of thing that would be adding not only a nuisance, but potentially a safety issue for Mr. Greco's business. I had a chance to address this with Mr. Greco as well. He's well aware that there is no parking on either side of Lynn Street, that it is a tough area. I believe, you know, I would be in favor of this if we could put some restrictions regarding the special permit. Would need to make sure that Mr. Greco would do his best to enforce the no parking, not only from himself and his employees, but also his customers as well. That would certainly be a big issue that I would want to see addressed. Thirdly, there were some open Health Department concerns that Mr. Greco was working through. I think the installation of a slop sink was the last thing. So I'd like to hear from Mr. Greco in terms of where that stands with the Health Department as well. But that's what my thoughts have been, and Mr. Greco has been willing to work through some of these issues. It is a tough spot with parking, absolutely. You know, I think it's a very difficult spot for the parking, but I'm confident that if he does his due diligence to make sure that people are adhering to the rules of the no parking, both on Lynn Street and the surrounding neighbors, I'd like to see him have a successful business and thrive there.
Mr. Greco, if you could just answer the one question that Counselor Walton raised regarding the slop sink, and whether that's installed, or whether that's been addressed.
Yep, that's been installed. I put that in the bathroom. I had John come down from the Health Department. He checked it out, he took some pitches, and said everything's good, good to go.
All right, thank you. I'll now open it up to the council. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the ward counselor. I just noticed there's two different times that are mentioned of times of operation. On the application, it says 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but in the narrative, he says 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Which, which one is what is going to be on the conditions?
In my discussions with Mr. Greco, I think it was 10 to 10, correct? So thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Manning Martin.
All right, thank you very much.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak, I'm actually, I'm in favor of this petition. I understand all the concerns with it. It is a tough area, but similar to the hair salon that we had approved months ago, that area just, any business that opens in that area is going to have issues with parking, that we'll have to, you know, give some faith to the owners here. And I think one of the things that's beneficial to Mr. Greco here is that you have the South PBD Trail, you have Brown's Pond, it's a largely, it's a walking neighborhood, and I think that's your clientele. And for nine months out of the year, you'll see a lot of people out and about on the nature trail or on the pond, and those are the people that will walk up to order a pizza on their way home, or a sub, or even get an ice cream cone. So I don't think for nine months out of the year, we'll have an issue. I think the wintertime, Jim, is when you really need to concentrate on helping us and making sure that, you know, Lynn Street and the Brown School and, you know, don't have issues. And I think Counsel Walton had mentioned before, to me, that, you know, maybe work with St. Anne's Church at night to see if you can at least have your delivery driver park over at St. Anne's.
Actually, I spoke to Father Sid over St. Anne's, and we're still in discussion on that, so...
A few pizzas for bingo night might help, so...
I try.
Thank you. And I, like I said, I do support it. I wish you the best of luck.
Thanks, John.
Counselor Charis.
Thank you. James, you said you're going to be, do you have a dumpster there now?
No.
So how do you get rid of your trash now?
Right, well, we're not open right yet. So when I do, there's no sit-down eating in there, so it's minimal. So might be a garbage bag or two. We're just going to take it out of there and take it off-site.
Okay, so the previous owners didn't have any dumpsters there?
No.
Okay. So, and now with the sales of the subs and pizza, you're not thinking that's going to be a much more of...
Substantial? No, I don't believe so. Because it's going to be mostly takeout and just walk-ups.
Sure. And it, and you're just going to dispose of it, certainly not going to use our regular weekly pickup?
No, 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 I already got...
Thank you. Good luck.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greco, I just want to wish you well. I'm in the ice cream business too, and competition's good, so...
Seeing no further questions, Counselor Walton.
Motion to close public hearing.
With the motion, all in, on the motion, Counsel Turco.
On the motion, I believe there's another late communication from the Fire Department for this permit. There's no objections, but if you wanted to receive those...
It was on the second page.
I'll save you the look. The motion to receive late communication has no objections from the Fire Department.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Walton.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Motion to close public hearing.
Motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Walton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed, I'm in favor of this. I would like to make a motion to approve with the following conditions. All trash to be removed from business on a nightly basis, compliance with all requirements of the PBD Health Department, and third, compliance with all the parking restrictions on Lynn Street and surrounding neighborhoods. Failure of the petitioner, its employees, or customers to adhere to the parking restrictions set forth herein, both on Lynn Street and in the surrounding neighborhoods, including the Brown School entrance, shall constitute a violation of the terms of this special permit.
You heard the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Walton.
Yes.
Gould. Charis. Manning Martin. Turco. O'Neill. Melville.
Yes.
McGinn. Rosignol.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 4B. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is here, but given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 23, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wiggan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass, on the application from MCR PBD Tenant LLC, DBA Spring Hill Suites, Boston, PBD, 43 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass, for the transfer of an inholder's license that said 43 Newbury Street, PBD, Mass. PBD City Council Counselor Thomas J. Rosignol, City Council President.
Thank you. Would the petitioner please come to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam, Mr. President and Counselors. Attorney Trish Fonsworth, Lawson &amp; White's in Boston for the applicant. And with me is Jonah Wright, who is the current manager, and he'll stay the manager. This is the Spring Hill Suites Hotel. You're familiar with it. It's been here 20 years. Change of ownership, so we're here for a transfer of the inholder license. The new owner is a company called MCR. It's the sixth largest hotel operator in the U.S. You know, they have 104 hotels in 27 states, so they know what they're doing, and, you know, will run a good ship. And Jonah's staying on, and he's been there since 2013. So if you have questions for him as well.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the petitioner? In favor? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Saslar is out of state, so with that, I'll be making a motion to approve the transfer of the inholder's license, MCR PBD Tenant LLC, DBA Spring Hill, Spring Hill Suites, Boston, PBD, 43 Newbury Street. So moved.
Just a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. On Counsel Manning Martin's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the council? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Counselors Walton.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis. Manning Martin. Turco.
Yes.
O'Neill.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing, two absent.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move to reports of committee. We'll start with the Joint Committee of the City Council and the School Committee. Counselor Charis.
Thank you, Council President. We had a meeting the other night, 6 o'clock, Wednesday. Myself, Counselor Gould, Counselor Turco, Counsel Walton, and Counselor Rosignol was present, as well as School Committee member Andrew Anotis. It was a, actually, I thought it was a great meeting. It was more of a roundtable discussion. It was good. It was, it went very well. We discussed things that was on the table from last year, and then obviously some new things that we'd be looking at this year. And this was a supportive group. This was a, it was a, the premise was that the school commit, schools support the city, the city council is supporting the programs on the, on the schools. So it went well. We did talk about start times that was on the table from last year, redistricting this, which was, I think is going to start conversations with the School Committee. We also talked about CTE. We also talked about the possibility of alumni being, set up a group. Counsel Walton said he can, he's going to help assist with the, Andrew Anotis on information that they could use on that. We also talked about the, you know, the understanding, recognizing the kids on the bikes going down Washington Street, Lynn Street, and the way they are. The city, schools has asked for, you know, city to, for whatever we can do to help enforce the safety of the way the kids are riding and things of that. We all got calls on, from parents and residents in the city on that. So it was very good. We'll probably have another meeting in maybe about six weeks, six, seven weeks. We're looking to have them periodically throughout the year to keep the schools and the city just much more connected with information. We'll also talk about, one of the other things was the developments that's going on throughout the city, and making sure the School Department is well aware of projects that will certainly influx the, the, the schoolchildren in the city, and we're going to be working on that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the report of progress. Seeing no questions, we'll now move on to the Human Services Committee. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services Committee did meet this evening prior to this meeting. Myself as chair, joined by Counselors Charis, Gould, Melville, and sitting in for Counsel Mitsuis, Counsel Rosignol. And we had several guests with us this evening at that meeting. We had Mr. Howard Karas, who is the author of legislation that is put forward by Representative Speliotis with respect to a couple of House bills. House Bill H. 1565 and House Bill H. 1566. And those bills are about healthcare proxy and efforts to digitize them so that the documents can follow with the patient wherever they go, online electronically or, and digitized. And also with respect to the healthcare proxy for individuals to understand what decisions they're making and their competency to allow the proxy to make that determination. So Mr. Karas did present on that. We had an aide, representative from, from Representative Speliotis's office, Mike Searls, who presented as well, and he reported that the bill has been introduced, and it is now sitting in the Judiciary Committee and to be heard in sometime in the future. And we also had Resident Stuart Lazara spoke in favor of moving this, these bills forward. And from this meeting, the motion was made by Counsel Rosignol that the City Council write a letter of support to Representative Speliotis in favor of these two bills, in support of them, in such that, such changes are paramount to effective healthcare, to digitize this information. are paramount to effective healthcare, to digitize this information, moving forward. So that motion was made, and it carried unanimously. So moved.
You heard the motion. Roll call vote.
Counselors Walton.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we also had our Veterans Agent join us this evening, Steve Patton. And he presented to the council. And first off, he thanked the generous anonymous donors who donated the new vehicle for our veterans to use in his program. And Captain Patton awarded kind of an impromptu selfless service award to the anonymous donors for helping out their fellow citizens. So that is a report of progress from Mr. Patton on the donation. And we also had a report of progress from the Vet Agent, Mr. Patton, that reminding us, as he did last year, so this really has become a priority for the council to support this initiative and this request from the Veterans Office, is for a new, larger office space for the Veterans Office and to relocate it so that they can have privacy in order to service the veterans in a manner that's conducive to their needs. Right now it is a really tight, small office. There's no waiting area. And the types of conversations that the veterans need to have in order to get services from the Veterans Office and agents is very sensitive information, and they need more privacy. And quite frankly, if you haven't been in the Veterans Office, I suggest you take, stop in and you'll see what they're talking about. It's, it's way too tight for even two people, let alone to have veterans in there, signing up for services and exchanging personal traumatic conversations and information. So the council is going to support that, that request 100%. And we're going to prioritize that moving forward this year. So that's a report of progress on the needs of the Veterans Office. And lastly, we had a motion by Counsel Melville as presented by Mr. Patton to move to accept the provisions of Chapter 60, Section 3F, as outlined in Chapter 141 of the Acts of 2016, establishing a municipal veterans assistance fund, to request the Finance Director review the above and report back to the council how the fund will be implemented and administered. That is the motion. And to better explain it, it is a motion simply that allows cities and towns, it's an act that allows cities and towns to allow taxpayers to voluntarily make additional donations. And what we're going to do is forward it to the Finance Director to report back to us and how best to do that. But we are supporting this act. And as I read the motion by Counsel Melville, so moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Manning Martin. Roll call vote.
Counselors Walton.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I didn't explain it, the act is relative to housing, operations, military, military service, and enrichment. So any type of donations that would come forward would be applied to those items for veterans. Thank you very much. That is all to report.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Manning Martin. Will now move to industrial community development. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met this, earlier this evening. Myself as chair, Counselor Charis, Counsel McGinn, Counsel Melville, and Counsel O'Neil. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into the mic. We met in discussion of the commercial kitchen amendment to our zoning ordinance. And we were, we had Community Development Director, Mr. Kurt Bellevance, who had worked on this for a little while and come up with a new, new language for our commercial kitchens. Motion was made by Counsel McGinn to adopt the proposed zoning amendment by the Community Development Director, Mr. Kurt Bellevance, with change to Section 2 of moving the B.C. to a special permit required. So moved.
The motion was to send that to the fire.
Send it to the planning.
Planning board. Okay. Thank you.
So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Gould. Roll call vote.
Counselors Walton.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to nothing.
There were no further discussions in community development. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Will now move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Walton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive item 8E. Application for special permit from Dara Chim, 51 Bayview Avenue, number one, Lynn, Mass., regarding address property 96 rear Lynn Street, first floor. To schedule a public hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Walton.
Yes. Oh, sorry. I apologize. No other motions. Thank you.
Counsel Gould.
No motions, Mr. President.
Counselor Charis.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to, suspension of the rules, move to accept 8A. Or was that, hasn't been made. You made it earlier. I'm sorry. Counsel Turco had made that motion earlier. Also, motion to ask the state to replace the sign as you're entering 128 South on the on-ramp to indicate that there is a merging lane that was taken down, I think, by an accident. But it's cars, as you see, piling up on Lowell Street backing up. People not knowing. So if we can ask the, Tim, if you can send a letter to the state, I'm sure you know where it needs to go to, to ask them to replace it. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Charis.
Thank you. Counselor, do you have a, okay. The, also, I'm sorry. The, just to inform people that the mayor's office has sent out a call and a notice that on next Wednesday at 6:30 here, there is a city neighborhood meeting on the proposal for King Street, 15 King Street, as a 40B from the hemisphere. Just letting people know that the, that has been set up by the mayor's office. So moved. This is important information.
Thank you.
And lastly, to acknowledge and recognize City Clerk Spanos on his last day. And as a counselor, I have to say, as a counselor and as, even as a resident before that, and as a council president, we've said it so many times, Tim was top-notch and always, you know, willing to guide you and, but not overstep his, the line that he would certainly point out. He's a gentleman, and I consider him a good friend. Allison is going to be picking up right after him. I know that. But, Tim, best of luck to you. I know we're not, not going to see you. You're going to be around a little bit here and there. But as, as a counselor, Tim, you made my job a hell of a lot easier. You're a great man. Thank you.
Counsel Gould.
I was going to echo Counselor Charis's sentiments. Tim, you've just been wonderful to us, to me in particular. And thank you for your friendship. We are really, really going to miss you. But I'm sure we'll, we'll find a way to Allison. Allison will move right into the role. But thank you, Tim, for everything.
Thank you. Counsel Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, I won't miss you because I will see you at Gorham and at golf. But thank you for everything. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive 8B from Al Tellarico Building Commissioner regarding special permit transfer, Sonia Claudio of Wellness and Aesthetics with Sonia, aesthetics with Sonia, 484 Lowell Street, Suite LLD5. Motion to receive and approve the special permit transfer. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8C from Robert Lebasier regarding completed council motion with the replacement of faded signs on Taylor and Johnson. So moved. With appreciation to Mr. Lebasier. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Further motions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counsel Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive a late communication from myself that you see on your desk.
Motion by Counsel Turco. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
That email is from Sharon Cameron in regards to the proper storage of trash and change in ordinance. I did have a brief discussion with Ms. Cameron. And as most of you know, the rodent complaints have kind of exploded a bit over the last month or so. So I would like to ask that she come back before the council and discuss. The original thought was that we were going to try to move to the TOTRS. But apparently, there's a contract issue with JRM. I wanted to see where we are with that. So maybe if we invite Mr. Lebasier also and Ms. Cameron to come to see if there's any chance that, that we could add to that or change that contract with JRM, or if there was any willingness, or if our only resort is the attached motion from Ms. Cameron, which she said we may need to make some changes to. So with that, I want to refer the issue of rodents and trash receptacles to the Human Services, is it? If Counsel Manning wouldn't mind. I believe that's where the rodent issues came from, is, is your committee.
I believe you're right. It did start in Human Services. To be honest with you, I don't know if it was referred to another, if it was, went to ICD after that. I don't recall. Maybe Tim recalls.
I think both committees handled them. I know it was before the Human Services Committee, and, and then some issues morphed into INCD. So it's up to the City Council how, where you want to.
I'm through you to, to Counsel Turco, or Counsel Manning. We did meet in both committees. I have no problem it being in Human Services. Last discussion we had was in ICD. But whatever, whatever you want to.
Why don't we keep it in ICD?
Sure.
I've had enough of talking about rats.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion is to move that to the ICD Committee for both trash and rodents, for an update on both of those issues.
You heard the motion by Counsel Turco. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Turco.
Move to receive, under suspension of the rules, item 8F on behalf of Counsel Mitsulis and set up a special permit hearing.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, I also wanted to say thank you to Tim, mostly for not screwing up the recount to 2015. So otherwise, I wouldn't be here today. So, Tim, thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of rules, move to accept communications from his honor, the mayor, seven, item 7A, transfer funds bunker gear. And then item 7B, transfer funds equipment, sidewalk, sidewalk plows, and refer them both to the Finance Committee. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And then, lastly, I do want to take a brief moment and also recognize Mr. Spanos for his last council hearing. Thank you for your 43 years of service to the City of PBD with over 14 and a half as the city clerk. You've done a, you've run a well-run office for anyone that's ever come in contact. Great staff. Also hiring Allison so that we have a nice transfer of the clerkship. And at the end of the day, I say this with all seriousness, your picture should be in the dictionary under the definition of a public servant. And just want to wish you a both happy, happy and healthy retirement. Thanks.
I just have a motion to accept late communication from the fire department on the inholder's license.
So moved. Thank you. You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Ryan Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to approve, with all papers being in order, taxi driver's license for Michael Picielli, license 53, Robert Rust, license 54. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Melville. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Under suspension of the rules, move to, with all papers being in order, move to approve use of the Wiggins Auditorium by PBD High School Vocal Music, February 12, 2020. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Melville. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of the rules, move to approve 2020 renewal for Boyd Cycles, 25 Walnut Street for Class II motor vehicle license. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Melville. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counsel Melville.
Under suspension of the rules, move to approve the 2020 entertainment license renewals for Cheesecake Factory, 210 Andover Street, Holiday Inn, PBD, 1 Newbury Street, Jade's Restaurant for Bourbon Street. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel Melville. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And move to, under suspension of the rules, move to approve the general licenses for 2020 renewal for Lodging House, Galicos Brothers Realty, 14 Foster Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, Tim, you're the man. You've been great to work with. You're really, for me coming into this a couple of years ago, you and that whole office. It's not just you. The office is an extension of you, which is really a great crew. I'm going to miss you. We had a lot of laughs. You and I always would sit on the side and just crack jokes. And I'm just really going to miss hanging around with you. But we'll see you around. You won't be too far. And, you know, what a great crew you have down there, Allison, and looking forward to hanging out with some of my favorite people. We'll talk to you.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve item 8D. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that, that is the primary warrant for the March election. So I just remind Councillors, before you leave tonight, you need to sign that. You can get that circulated now. Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8G and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8H and refer back to PMLP for an alternative solution. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counsel McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
It's on the motion. I heard you question. It is, PMLP, I've been dealing with them on this, and they have already come up with an alternative solution. So it's PMLP. And the, what you have in front of you, Tim, will be withdrawn. So ultimately, it will be withdrawn, right? Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8I. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9F, entertainment license new, Brothers Restaurants, 11 Main Street, and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just add, Tim, my deepest gratitude for your many years of public service to the City of PBD. You are a true professional, true gentleman. It has been just delightful working with you. I appreciate all the help and support over the years. Before, I was a counselor, just, just coming in as a citizen. I was in a lot into your office. And, and so you, you treated me well then, and you have always treated me well as a counselor.
as a counselor, and, and just eager to help all. And from what I hear, it's the same with everyone, so what, what more could you possibly ask for? And I, and I think we've heard repeatedly here tonight, just what a testament it is to you, what a well-run office it has been, and, and certainly, you've not only exercised some excellent management skills, but certainly some excellent hiring skills, too, and I think that's been quite evident. So again, I want to personally thank you from a deep down, how much I appreciate you, what you've done, and I wish you well in your retirement.
I have no motions this evening, but I just wanted to echo the sentiments from the councilors that have already spoke prior to me being able to. Tim, it's been an absolute pleasure. Unfortunately, I only got to spend two meetings with you in this chair, but it's been an honor, both when I was on the school committee and as a city counselor. You go above and beyond what's asked of you at every turn, and you'll be missed. And I do have one small token of appreciation from the council to present you with, just a, a small thank you for your dedication and your years of service and your hard work. So thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Yeah, hit the, so moved.
I just made a few notes, so, um, this isn't going to be easy, but first and foremost, I do want to thank all of you for all your support over the years. I, everybody here is my friend, and I, I think that's the biggest testament that I can take out of this. It's not just a working relationship. We're all friends, and I thank you for that. And I miss interacting with all of you, most of all, on the day-to-day issues. It is bittersweet moving on, but it is time to move on. I have my health, and my wife is retiring, Janet, so we want to enjoy life and do some traveling and play some golf. So, but you really can't do it without the help of others. And first of all, I have a great staff. Carlene has been with me all, all the way, and Allison's, come on, I'm so thankful that she's taking over, and I thank the council for that and all your support there. Thank you, you made a great choice, and she'll do a wonderful job. And I've worked with four great mayors, and, you know, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my predecessor, Natalie Mega, who made this all happen for me, so I thank her very much, and, you know, thank all the department heads that I've worked with over the years in building relationships, and I've made a lot of friends there. And then, lastly, the love and, and support of my family, and I couldn't do it without my wife, Janet, who's the rock, and she's watching at home, but, you know, I couldn't do it without her, so I just want to thank you very much for all your support over the years, and, and I'll still be around. So, thank you very much. Thank you.